Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's a little funny being up here rather than down there. But before we get to the later part, I'll come down for Q and A. So we're just having a more natural conversation face to face. But you know, the reason that we wanted to have it here, in addition to being in this beautiful theater, is just to have a chance to show you some slides on a better projector. And what we're going to do tonight, I think you all know, and I see a lot of familiar faces, but I try to do a town hall once a month. Actually, I do a town hall at least once a month, many times more than once a month, and try to mix the topic up, you know, once in a while. Sometimes focus on a specific issue. We've done town halls recently on sustainability and the climate stewardship plan for the city, on blight, on public safety issues, and on just general topics. And of course, we've done a few on the budget. Tonight's is focused on the budget. That doesn't mean that when we get to Q and A, we can't talk about anything else. Anything's within limits. Whatever is on your mind is in limits. But the only thing I ask is that we try to stay focused on the budget discussion until we've kind of exhausted that discussion, and then I'm happy to talk about anything else as well, so that we keep a real conversation going. I will say a couple of things upfront. When we decided to do this town hall, and I asked our chief financial officer, Darryl Hill, and our budget director, Melissa McCaw, to give presentations, we scheduled this at a time when we thought that we were going to have some clarity from the state, one way or the other. So I will confess today that you're probably not going to hear that much new if you've been following this, the issue. If you haven't been following it, you're going to learn a lot. But I think most of you have probably been paying attention to where we are. And our hope was that, you know, the legislature was going to vote on a budget on September 14th, and we would be able to say where we stood, what that meant for the future, what our plans were, and how we could paint that picture for all of our residents, all of our businesses, all of our taxpayers about what that future held. We are still, instead, in a period of uncertainty. And we don't know when that uncertainty is going to be lifted. But up at the state Capitol, they continue to have budget negotiations, but I don't think anybody knows when they're going to come to a conclusion and when there's going to be a budget passed. And when there is a budget passed, nobody knows what's going to be in it. So, you know, again, unfortunately, we don't have the opportunity to have our finance, our chief financial officer and our budget director talk to us about the path ahead with certainty. Instead, we're going to readdress those issues that we've been talking about for a long time, which are what's the root of our problem, what's the size of our problem, and what are some of the things that are going to have to be done to deal with it. So I'm going to ask first our budget director, Melissa McCaw, to come up. And she's going to talk about the main elements of the budget, about the size of the deficit, about the big cost drivers, about the outlook over the next five years. There are some updates in there, but there's nothing dramatically new. And then after that, I'll ask Darryl Hill, our CFO, to come up and talk about the debt profile in particular, and what we're facing in the years ahead from a debt payment standpoint. And also to talk a little bit about some of the bigger options in the two paths available to us. And then, after that, I'm going to come back up, talk a little bit about what our advisory team has been doing. As you probably know, we brought on a legal team. We have a financial advisory team that's working side by side with that legal team. I'll talk a little bit, to the extent that I can, about what they're doing. And then I'll talk about some of the broader strategic questions. And then we'll just go into question and answer and have a genuine conversation. So it's maybe a little bit longer presentation than most of my town halls, but I hope you find it useful. So Melissa McCaw is making her way up. And I am pleased, any moment, to introduce you, Melissa McCaw, our budget director. Thank you, Melissa.
Who's CEO?
You're CFO.
This is Scott.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I figured I always like to take it from the top. So we're going to kind of do a rundown from fiscal year 2017 to present. And so for those of you who have been following the budget process here at the City of Hartford, this will be a repeat, but it will also be a refresher. So starting from fiscal year 2017 to 2018, we had an adopted revenue budget of approximately $544 million in fiscal year 2017. The revenues as anticipated for 2018 are approximately $18.7 million higher. The primary contributor would be the successful revaluation that's driving that revenue growth from '17 to '18. In terms of expenditures, our expenditures grew from $552.9 to $612.9 million. Those increases are primarily fixed costs, things such as pension, debt service for existing acquired debts. But even with that growth, that expenditure base still retains the deep cuts that we made in fiscal year 2017 and some additional cuts that we made in fiscal year 2018. That being said, the revenue budget as reflected in the PowerPoint assumes that state aid would be flat at fiscal year 2017 levels. So the adopted budget shows a $49.6 million gap that we knew when we acknowledged we were transparent about that. We acknowledge the fact that 50% of our tax base is tax exempt. And hence, we began to have a very transparent conversation with the state about a new partnership. I want to delve a little bit further in the second slide to illustrate that point a little more clearly. And so this slide is a representation of our payment in lieu of taxes. These are the payments that we receive for our non-taxable property. And you can see here that if the City of Hartford was reimbursed at the statutory reimbursement percentages, so for state-owned in the airports, that statutory reimbursement percentage is 45%. And you can see for colleges and hospitals, that's 77%. If the state was actually fully reimbursed at these statutory reimbursement levels, we would receive $89 million per year. Instead, the column that they needed right shows you that we actually received $37 million per year for strictly pilot payments. That difference is $52 million. And that is certainly would make a sizable debt infrastructural gap that we face that you'll see in future slides. Update on the fiscal year 2017 budget. When we built the fiscal year 2018 budget, we anticipated that we'd have a shortfall of approximately up to $14 million. Very pleased to report that due to successful collection of current and prior year taxes, very aggressive measures taken to increase our attrition savings, other measures like the one-time reimbursements of fringe reimbursements, we actually anticipate closing '17 with a shortfall of only $2 million. And so this slide shows you our updated projected gap. Because embedded in that expenditure number for the adopted $612.9 million was an assumption that if we had a shortfall in '17, we would have to repay or pay those expenditures, cover those expenditures. So by that deficit coming in lower, that reduces the amount that we actually have to pay to cover the prior year shortfall. That is a reduction of $12 million. And just for purposes of demonstration, we will continue to aggressively pursue concessions with our unions. What's built into the budget is an assumed concession saving of $4 million. But in the event we are not successful, $41.6 million is what we currently project as a revised budget deficit for fiscal year 2018. So let's talk a little bit about what drives, next slide please, what drives our expenditure budget. And I really like this pie chart because it very illustrates, in colors, in all colors, where we spend, where does the money go? You know, so the green part of the pie would be our salary cost. The blue reflects benefits, so that would be health, workers' comp, insurances, all very necessary expenditures for the City of Hartford that you cannot unilaterally particularly change. The yellow piece of the pie would be pension costs. The utilities is the red, that's $23 million. Those are items that are largely of a fixed nature. But if you were to take all those items that I consider relatively fixed that we can't just unilaterally change, we're talking about 79% of the city's non-education budget are in those types of categories. And so hence, we gets the challenge. As we face these structural deficits, we are no longer facing a challenge that we can nibble around the margins in order to resolve it. Next slide, please. So if may have proven indicative, the picture doesn't look significantly different. Might be a little bit lower for fiscal year 2018, but the message is consistent. We consistently face gaps that continue to grow. This trajectory takes us to fiscal year 2022, and our gap grows from $41 million to $80 million. And so as you reflect back on the prior slide, and you look at some of those pieces of the pie, even if you were to take one piece of the pie, if you were to look at your benefits and insurances, that would not solve the problem alone. Okay? Because the magnitude, the sheer magnitude of the gap cannot be achieved with addressing one component of the budget. So, next slide. What are the cost drivers? When you look at these gaps, there are three key cost drivers. One, pensions. Pensions, I consider them legacy costs. They are commitments that we made to our retirees based on the collective bargaining agreement that was in place at the time of retirement. We do not have a tool to unilaterally change that. Those costs are growing because the commitments we made are now coming due, and we will have to pay the expenses to meet those commitments. Secondly, health costs. You listen to the news, healthcare costs grow in a trend of anywhere between 7% to 10%. We spend approximately $40 million a year on health costs. That is something that we can continue to look at. But again, there will be some costs to have to retain our employees. And then a component of that would be retiree health. And again, similar to pension, these are benefits that were negotiated when they were active employees that were subject to collective bargaining agreements. And the third major driver would be debt. And our CFO, Hill, is going to come up and talk to you about debt in further detail. But these are debt costs related to debt we've already acquired. So we've already received those monies, and the debt profile, as he will demonstrate to you, shows that our debt costs grow anywhere on average from $10 to $15 million a year. So again, when you look at what's driving, what the cost drivers are to these gaps, they are items that you cannot easily remedy. So at this time, I'm going to ask CFO Hill, if he'd come up and walk us through, as he typically says, hold us by the hand and walk us through. He's going to give us a little education about debt.
Good evening.
Yep. We got it.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's always a pleasure to be before you. As Melissa said, I'm going to cover the debt section. As Mayor Bronin has consistently stated, debt is a significant component of our fiscal challenges. The slide behind me shows our existing debt service. That's a really important fact because it does not include any projections for future debt issuance. Melissa's budget projection that's included in the adopted budget has a, or has a projection for future issuance to fund our capital program. I believe that the slides that she just ended with, it showed the revised five-year budget projection removes the additional debt service related to future borrowings. So on this slide, and I'll switch to the next slide, which shows a more granular image of the individual series of bonds that have been issued to fund our capital program in prior years. You'll notice that the high watermark is in 2021 at just around $61 million. That increase from this year, or the first year shown is 2017, is a result of the two debt restructurings that were done, I believe in 2013 and 2014. Since 2014, the city has issued $125 million in new bonds and executed several refundings that have reduced our debt service. But as of right now, this is an accurate reflection of the city's existing debt service with one caveat. It does not include our tax anticipation notes that were issued in April. It's $20.12 million that was issued in April to guarantee that we'd have the ability to fund operations for last fiscal year. That is not shown in this graphic. If it were, the second bar, which is fiscal year 2018, would be $20.44 million higher. That is the debt service that Melissa spoke to with regard to that approximately $2 million shortfall that was covered by the proceeds of the TAN. So in a normal world, we would be looking to build on top of this existing debt service to fund our future capital program. I'll speak to that nuance a little bit later. And after I'm done, Melissa will be back up to tie it together to the budget projection. The difference between issuing bonds and having the debt service to be repaid over the amortization schedule versus cash funding our capital program. Before I walk you through a scaled-down version of our current five-year capital improvements program, I want to share with you our existing ratings, but in a broader context, one that looks at all of the rating categories that both Moody's and S&amp;P show. So on the image behind me, Moody's on the left, S&amp;P on the right. The top half of the table shows the investment grade ratings that begin at AAA. Guild Edge, nothing higher. Unlike the ratings below AAA, most of which have Moody's World, they changed the number of years ago from the plus straight minus to the 1, 2, 3. AAA, there is no 1, 2, 3, or plus or minus. You're either AAA or you're not, like some of our neighbors are. Below the AAA, you get into the double A with the same 1, 2, 3, or plus straight and minus for both Moody's and S&amp;P. A few years ago, the city had what we call split ratings. We had a double A rating, double A minus from S&amp;P, and Moody's had us rated at straight A, or A2. Today, because of the change in opinion of the rating agencies, and I say it that way because it is an accurate reflection of what the rating agencies do, which is provide their opinion to the market about our financial wherewithal to meet our debt obligations. Both Moody's and S&amp;P, as recently as yesterday, have changed their opinions. Those ratings that are bold and underlined reflect what the city's current debt ratings are by both Moody's and S&amp;P. So that CAA3 by Moody's and CC by S&amp;P were both issued yesterday afternoon. Those being in the below investment grade category do not provide the city with access to the capital markets. As I mentioned in the existing debt service schedule, that's important because access to the capital markets is how we could be able to borrow to fund our capital improvements program. So without the ability to access the capital markets, and if we were to do some non-traditional form of borrowing to fund our capital improvements program, it would be very expensive for perspective. The last time the city went to market with a new money borrowing, I believe our interest rate was, our all-in, we call it the TIC, or true interest cost, was just below 4%. Without the access now, we don't know what the rate would be. But we can look to other communities across the country that have been in similar situations and had to borrow. And let's say that they had double-digit interest rates. From what I've heard in recent months, those interest rates have been anywhere from 11% to 14%. But they're structured in a way that would allow them to be refinanced as the municipality comes out of its financial distress. So the rate would be lowered over time. But given the capital needs of the city and the significant level of debt service that we have in place now, we have been and continue to be, this year, on what we refer to as a debt die. With Mayor Bronin's direction last year, fiscal '17, we did not borrow any new money. And we do not have plans to borrow any new money this year. Depending on how long our proceeds in hand or grant funds that are coming to fund capital will last. At some point, what we have in hand and the grants that we'll receive will be exhausted. And we will need to do one of two things, just to repeat myself. We would either have to borrow or find additional cash to fund our capital program. So on the next slide, our, it's not all of our existing adopted capital improvements program. At the time that, and I'm always hesitant to speak for the mayor to speak so well for himself, but the recommended budget and the budget the council adopted, we believe to be essential things. Those essential things included some quality of life things that would help maintain our infrastructure and maintain the quality of life for our residents. This pared-down version of the adopted CIP looks at truly essential, talking about life, health, and safety. Right? How do we keep the roads, the sidewalks, keep our infrastructure, our facilities from falling into disrepair? And as you look at the school projects shown on the top of the page, we expanded upon what's included in the adopted budget book to show the individual items that the Board of Education, Hartford Public Schools, requested so that you could gain an appreciation for the boilers and HVAC systems and roofs that need to be replaced at various school facilities. All of those in blue add up to the white line right below the blue, which is what appears in the budget book. So those necessary repairs at various school facilities aggregate to that just under $2 million for fiscal '18 and just over $4 million for fiscal '19. As you get farther away, it's natural as far as the planning process, that years three, four, and five, they will have a better feel for what repairs are needed, and those numbers will increase from what's shown here. Below in public safety, those items, again, are necessary from either an equipment perspective, and they're equipment shown in the CIP as opposed to our lease financing vehicle, where we typically finance rolling inventory and equipment because of the sheer magnitude of that public safety equipment. I think there's a ladder truck and Tac 1. These pieces of equipment, I think Tac 1 is about $700,000 to $800,000. And ladder trucks are requiring an investment of about $1.3 million. So the equipment line shown, the safety equipment for cameras, both body cameras, cameras in cars, tasers, street cameras, and the way that the police department, from a technology perspective, is working to enhance security across the city, some of which is already in place and provides benefit. These are continuations of the acquisition and implementation of those enhanced policing methods. On the next slide, there is the Hartford Parks Trust Fund, which in the adopted budget was just below $16 million, or actually just above $16 million. With the project shown here being deemed as necessary because they have that life, health, safety component. I think they speak for themselves when you look at ponds and the playscapes. And playscapes might be a little bit curious to some who might think that they're just new. When in fact, there are playscapes that exist that are in disrepair and would present or could present our youth with an unsafe environment. So not repairing them, I do not believe would be an option. The option would be to remove them, which I don't believe that the community would support. Right below the Hartford Parks Trust Fund are a wide variety of projects that the Public Works Department serves on point for. This is where you get into really our infrastructure projects that are maintaining our roads and sidewalks and the various facilities spread out across the city. These with, on the next slide, which has development services for anti-blight efforts and matching funds for federal and state grants. Of course, grants are the best kind of money because it's free, it's gifted. But there are a significant portion of grants that require a match by the city to get the federal or state dollars. And the last line for emergency demolitions, that's a recurring line that is provided, included to provide both the Department of Development Services and Public Works with the ability to remove structures that present a hazard to the general public. As you add all of those categories in this presentation of the adopted CIP budget down, you get to that total, or looking at FY '15, sorry, FY '18, of just over $31 million. And in that purple area are the offsets to our capital program, or at least as anticipated. The Hartford Parks Trust Fund is one of our funding sources. The energy credits and the low-set monies that are provided by the state, which we typically use for milling and paving, are included. The offsets for our CRP in this presentation are different than what's in the adopted budget book. There are some projects that were removed. Most notably and of significant size are major school construction projects. In the adopted budget book, not in fiscal '18, but in fiscal '19 through '22, there are a placeholder for major school construction. $50 million. That's back at the very top under schools. In the offsets in purple, there would be a reduction in that need based on the state's reimbursement for school construction, which depending on the type of school it is currently, it's 80% for Hartford schools and 95% for Magen schools. In the adopted budget, I believe there's a $37.5 million offset for the placeholder of $50 million related to schools. So when you look at debt as a significant component of our budget this year, at roughly $43 million, it's going to grow $18 million over the next three fiscal years to reach its peak. But that's all with no new debt. And I'll ask Melissa to come back up, who will put the existing debt and the assumptions with regard to how we fund our future capital program together to see what the impact on the budget would be, not only from a debt service perspective, but also if we continue not to have access to the capital markets and are required to generate additional cash to fund our capital program. Melissa McCaw.
So this is a familiar. Thank you. This is a familiar graphic. You previously saw this bar chart with just the red line. And that's this typical general fund expenditures. But as Darryl indicated, with the challenges in accessing the capital market and in light of the fact that we still have a responsibility to ensure basic infrastructure, life, safety, et cetera, we would then have to build in an expectation that we have to fund those types of costs from operations. So you can see in fiscal year 2019, the $52.1 million structural gap, when you add in the capital expended, what would typically be funded through debt to cover capital-type expenditures, that grows to $73.4 million. And when you continue to run that out to fiscal '22, the $80 million gap becomes a $90 million gap. Next slide, please. So where does this leave us? There are really two paths to fiscal sustainability. And one, we've talked about, and it's not new, and that's a new partnership with the State of Connecticut. A partnership that would include a dramatic increase in revenues, an acknowledgement of the non-taxable property, combined with additional expectations for a long-term plan. And that plan would require every stakeholder, from our labor, to our corporate community, to our bondholders, to be a part of helping us develop a new financial model for the City of Hartford. And so we anxiously await the outcome of that ongoing dialogue. But the other path, absent any additional state aid, is also a challenge. We would continue to address long-term liabilities like pension and debt. We'd continue to make, expect that other stakeholders would be a part of the equation. But realistically speaking, every stakeholder has to be a part of the solution for the City of Hartford to make ground in achieving fiscal sustainability. So with that, I'm going to ask Mayor Lou Bronin to come back and to close us out.
Right. Thank you, Melissa, thank you, Darryl. So, you know, again, for those of you who've been to these budget presentations and discussions of the issue, there's not a lot new there. But if you're like me, looking at that five-year projection is nonetheless sobering. projection is nonetheless sobering and startling. And I think it leads me to the conclusion, and hopefully we do the conclusion too, that our primary obligation has to be to put ourselves in a position to be able to look everyone of you in the eye, everyone of our residents in the eye, everyone of our business owners in the eye, and say that we have dealt not just with this year, but with that five-year projection and beyond, that we've put the city on a sustainable path. But as Daryl and Melissa presented, there are only really two ways to do it. The first relies on a dramatic increase in revenue from the state of Connecticut, which I think is appropriate and deserved, because this city bears a disproportionate share of the burden for providing non-taxable services in the state. We have a lot of state property which pays no taxes, we have a lot of hospital property which pays no taxes, university and colleges pay no taxes, MDC Sewer Treatment Plant, right, a $2 billion plant serves the region, pays no taxes. The Trash to Energy Power Plant serves 70 or more cities and towns in the state located in Hartford, pays no taxes, and of course, the countless social service agencies that provide vital services to people in Hartford and out of Hartford, but they're located in Hartford and pay no taxes. So the state revenue piece is essential. But I hope what you took from that is that even full funding of the pilot formula is not fully sufficient to deal with that long-term challenge. And so as you've heard me or our team go out there and say, we need all stakeholders to participate, and in particular, we've been talking lately about bondholders and talking to bondholders, we need them to participate, because there is no path to true sustainability that doesn't involve the participation of all stakeholders. And when you see that debt chart, which rises from $30 million or so this year up to $61 million in fiscal year 2021, and then it doesn't drop off, it plateaus and stays there for a while, that's a debt burden that cannot be managed. It's a debt burden that cannot be managed even if we were getting every dollar of the current pilot formula from the state. And again, that's why, no matter what path we take, we will have to fashion a partnership of all of our stakeholders to make that work. Now, Melissa didn't say it so directly at the end, but the other path, in the absence of a new state partnership, is a bankruptcy plan. There is no alternative to those two paths. And I think one of the things we really have to ask ourselves and make sure that we are asking the legislature is to, is whether the state of Connecticut is prepared to partner to put its capital city on a path that is not just solvent and sustainable, but actually a path to strength and to growth, and not just this year, but every year, because you've got a structure that's fundamentally broken. You have a city that's built on the tax base of a suburb. You have a city that has five times the population of towns like Farmington or Glastonbury and barely more taxable property than either one. You have a city that has nearly 40% less taxable property than the smaller suburb of West Hartford next door, or our peer city of New Haven down the road. So you've got a structure that's just not built to work. And we, as the city, are focused on not just that short-term solution of getting from this year to next year, but on actually putting ourselves on a path to solvent. And that's why we've had to talk about options that in any other circumstance, no one would want to have to talk about, because we, I think, have a fundamental obligation to ensure that whatever we do to deal with this current crisis doesn't leave future mayors, future city councils, future generations to deal with exactly the same challenge, but worse. That doesn't mean we're going to be able to solve this forever, but it does mean that we have to solve it in a real way that gives us real time to build and to grow, and that does it without putting an unmanageable, insurmountable barrier in the path of those who come after us. That's one of the reasons why we brought on the legal team and the financial advisory team to work with us right now. I talked earlier on at the beginning about the fact that there's enormous uncertainty in the state. We don't know what the outcome of the state budget will be, and we don't know what the outcome of future budgets will be. And one thing we cannot allow ourselves to do is to just wander or stumble off of a cliff. We have to be prepared, we have to be sober and clear-eyed during that preparation. We can't base our preparation based on hopes or wants. We have to base it, we have to do that preparation based on a clear-eyed look at all of the risks that are out there and all the uncertainty that's out there. So we have a team that includes a legal team that has extensive experience in municipal restructuring, that includes outside of Chapter 9 as well as inside Chapter 9. It's not all about the Chapter 9. And we have a financial advisory team that's working hand-in-hand with them that has similarly broad experience with municipal restructuring in both situations. Right now, those teams are doing two big things. Number one, they are drilling down on our cash flow position, on our holdings, on our expected outflows, so that we have as much certainty as we can about the timeline that we face when it comes to liquidity. But, you know, liquidity and waiting to pay your bills, that's a, that's not the real measure of whether we're healthy. And so what they're also doing is working with us to put together a range of scenarios for what we can do in the presence of a state budget and in the absence of a state budget. And we're going to continue that work in the coming weeks. I hope that next month's town hall, we'll be able to give you some greater clarity and certainty about the path that we're on. But I, again, I hope you take from this two big things. One, whichever path we're on is going to require us to continue to engage and involve all stakeholders. And whichever path we're on, we're going to stay focused, not just on a short-term problem, but as a long-term problem. Now, I want to address the rating agency actions, because, you know, Daryl spoke to it, and also, you know, it's been in the press just yesterday, but over the last couple Here's how I view those rating agency actions. Number one, your credit rating matters most when you're looking to borrow money. As you saw from those slides, at the, at present, we don't have the capacity to borrow money, even if we could access the markets. We don't have the ability to keep piling debt on a deficit. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, what the rating agencies are saying is essentially the same thing that we've been saying, that you have a structure that's not built to work, that you have a capital city that has already taken dramatic measures to reduce expenses. In their last report, Moody's actually said that they believe that if the city of Hartford were to continue to try to make cost reductions, it wouldn't be a question of what services you reduce, it would be a question of what core services you eliminate. And we are not going to cut this city to health or strength beyond the very deep and dramatic reductions we've already made. The second piece is, the rating agencies recognize that with the highest property tax level in the state, particularly for our corporate taxpayers, our businesses, you can't tax your way through this problem either. We all know that one of the reasons our small businesses leave Franklin Avenue, or Albany Avenue, or Weathersfield, or Farmington, is because they can move two miles down the road and cut their tax bill in half. And if you're a small business, that's a big chunk of your costs. So we can't tax our way out of the problem either. The rating agencies see that, it's no secret. And we haven't been shy about talking about this problem, because I don't believe you can solve a problem if you're trying to hide it at the same time. So the credit rating agencies are now looking at, here's another way to think about the credit rating. The credit rating agencies are looking at this from the perspective of bondholders, and they're saying, is there a risk that the bondholders are going to have to do something that they didn't expect or intend to do? And they're saying, yes, there's a risk of that. One of the reasons they're saying that is that I'm saying very clearly and directly that any long-term solution is going to require bondholders to be part of the solution. They're looking at this from the bondholders' perspective, as they should. We're looking at this from the resident's perspective, from our employer's perspective, and from our city's perspective as a whole, and focused on one thing and one thing only, which is the long-term path, the solvency, stability, and strength. So with that, I know you've already sat through a much longer presentation than I, than is usually the case in these town halls, but I want to thank Melissa and Daryl again for those presentations, and why don't we just shift over to a conversation? I want to acknowledge though, a few, a few folks. First of all, we have Councilwoman Glendal and Thames, who is also the chair of our Budget Committee. We have Councilwoman Willie Bermudez, I think is still here. I'm sorry, I can't see very well with the light. We see, I see Councilwoman, Councilman Dr. Larry Deutsch, and I apologize, are there any other council members here? Okay. So thank you, and there are, there are a number of folks from, from the city staff as well who are here tonight, and I think it's important for everyone who's part of the city's team to be part of this conversation too, because they are battling every day to fix it, but they're also dealing with that same uncertainty that we're all facing. And I want to thank them deeply for everything that they do, the hard work that they put in every day, even in the face of this kind of uncertainty and challenge. So with that, I'd love to shift over to the conversation, and happy to address any of the things that were on that presentation, or any other budget-related issues, and then we can address any other things as well. Yes, sir. So the question is, can we, with apologies, I don't know if you missed, I think you might have missed the beginning, what we're going to try to do is focus the first part of the discussion on budget stuff. I don't have to talk about non-budget stuff further. The question is about blighted property. What's that? I would rather stay focused on the budget first, and then we can address, you know, other non-budget stuff later, just we have a, a conversation that can sort of develop some, some flow to it. Sure.
Please give the mic for questions. Hi, Leslie Hammond. Thank you so much for doing this, and thanks for all your hard work, Melissa and Daryl. I, a couple of thanks, I'm a Realtor, and I've been talking to a lot of people about Hartford, and I'm hearing a lot of grumbling about people that have poor families and higher, that as Melissa pointed out, we're getting more income because their values went up, but they're all trying to challenge it left and right, because, you know, their taxes went way up. So I don't know, one of them said they didn't get very far with their first challenge, and so they're, they might have to go to another challenge, but that is a concern, because there's a lot of pushback about that. And then, secondly, the whole thing with pilot, I finally get it after months of coming to, you know, meetings, and I just feel every time I have a chance, anytime like the state says, oh, poor Hartford, we have to bail it out, I'm like, ah, excuse me, you owe us the money, and I think we have to figure out a way to get that message out there. And I just tried today with a bunch of Realtors, and guess what they said? Oh, you pay people $130,000 for their pensions, or whatever story they might read in the current, and we just had to somehow do a better job. And I know you've been trying with the towns, but we all have to get it in our head, that this is owed to us. This is not the poorest stepchild, that we have to beg for the money, they owe us this money. So, anyway, thanks.
Thanks, Leslie. So let me speak to that first part. You're, you are absolutely right, so in case anybody isn't familiar with the issue, City Hartford has a split, we have basically two property tax rates. We have a commercial property tax rate, which is apples-to-apples with every other property tax rate in the state, and our property tax rate is 74.29. The next, the next highest is Waterbury, which is at 60, and then you've got a couple of cities that are in the mid-50s. As comparison, I think New Haven's budget has theirs at 38 this, this year. East Hartford's, I think, was at 45, and the surrounding towns are in the 30s. So a dramatic difference. Our residential tax rate is, is lower, because we assess on a smaller percentage of the value. So the apples-to-apples middle rate property tax rate for residential is in the mid-30s. But I want to say two things about that. First of all, the city of Hartford has a median income, median household income of And we have a lot of single, we have a lot of homeowners who want a fixed income, who are struggling to keep those homes even at that property tax rate. So I don't think there's a, a lot of room to move that. But for our commercial property taxpayers, and here's what's the point of Leslie's thinking, commercial property taxpayers includes all residential property with four or more units, which is actually a big chunk of our residential property in the city, a large majority of our residential property in the city. Those properties are paying full freight 74.29 property tax rate versus half that in all the surrounding town, and it is not sustainable. Which gets back to that point I was making earlier, we cannot solve this by raising taxes. In fact, as part of that true long-term solution, we have to be putting ourselves in a position to begin bringing that down. But I'm not going to sit here and tell you that we have a path to bring that down anytime soon. We're going to fight like hell to do it, because we know that growth requires us to do it. But as it is, those commercial property taxpayers, whether they're a small business, owned in a storefront, or whether it's a commercial property owner who owns a four-family, or a larger apartment building, that tax burden is unmanageably, unworkably high. And you talked about, you know, that sort of the double-edged sword, yeah, we got more revenue because the value of some commercial property went up, for some of those buildings that actually put them underwater. In other words, because the value went up, and because their taxes went up so high, now they're paying more than they can make on the building. That doesn't work. And that's just one more type of unsustainability that we talked about. But the bottom line is, that's why we're not going to fix this by raising taxes.
Good evening, Mayor, Alyssa Peterson. I applaud you for, for coming out month after month to tell a story that none of us like to hear. I, I really have to say that I don't care for your messaging, and I'm asking, like Leslie, for you to change your message, okay? I really would like you to tell the state in a better, a better explanation how long we have not been getting pilot. You have not painted a picture of how long this has been happening, and how we have tried to cobble and paste together budgets and borrow money. And, and you've gone out to other towns and talked about our, our poor budget habits and our pensions, and it's unsustainable, et cetera, excuse me, when all, this has been happening cumulently for some, quite some time. So I, I really would like you to hammer that home, number one. Number two, this is a picture of our debt service. This was approved for a five-year plan just three years ago, when Mr. Hill first came here. It shows us going to a top of $38 million, it's in our five-year plan, okay? The most was $38 million, our debt service. Somehow, whether it was Mr. Hill, Mr. Cloud, Mr. Wooden, the former council president, somehow we began issuing bonds, refinancing, et cetera. So in this three-year period, and again, this is about messaging, we got off track. There was an approved plan, auditors approved it, many years of auditors, the, the bond, if everybody read the stadium documents, our bond rating was rosy. These Moody's keeps talking, I mean, as, as far back as two years ago, our, our bond rating was rosy. So again, I'd like you to change your messaging about how long we've been suffering, number one. Number two, I'd like you to talk about what happened just in the last couple of years that sent us skyrocketing off the charts, okay? And number three, the last thing I'd like is, from day one, you're an attorney, from day one, I never understood why we didn't do what Mayor, former Deputy Mayor Carbone and others have said, is go to court, federal court, and say, this property tax is discriminatory to Hartford. Everybody else can afford to pay property taxes and, and be made whole. In Hartford, the property tax system doesn't work for us. In Hartford, the property tax system doesn't work for us. And I, again, it's not our fault, and we either go to court and get a court to force the state to pay us, or, again, you change the messaging and take legal action to force all this money that's owed to us, that we've tried to bond. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Leslie. So I'll take, I'll take each one of those. So I'll go, I'll go one step further on the first thing, we're just trying to paint the picture. I obviously, I don't agree that we haven't painted the picture. I try to paint that picture every time I talk, especially when talking to the state. And we sent a letter up to state leaders, state legislative leaders in the government a couple of weeks ago, that focused on this point in particular. You take the city that's small to begin with, you take half the property off the tax roll, and you have a structure that cannot work. And as I said earlier, that property doesn't come off the tax rolls, because we want it to come off the tax rolls. And it doesn't come off the tax rolls because it's all serving the city of Hartford. It comes off the tax rolls because all of those tax-exempt entities are providing services of some kind to the entire state or to the entire region, yet they are located in our capital city. And as a result, we bear a vastly disproportionate burden. And not only have I been arguing for full funding of the pilot formula, that's been on the books for a long time, but I've been arguing for a new pilot formula. Because the truth is, the existing pilot formula actually treats state property worse than other types of non-taxable property. State property, even under the formula, is reimbursed at a lower rate than hospitals, colleges. And of course, we have the largest amount of state property. So that formula hurts us most. Here's where I think it's important to clarify, because while I am all for strong messaging, I also think it's important to be accurate. In a legal sense, the state doesn't owe us money. The state is bound by what the legislature most recently did. And what they most recently did was pass whatever budget they just passed. I think morally, they owe us that appropriate level of funding every year. I think politically, they should be providing that. I think from a strategic standpoint, for the state's best interest, they should be paying that amount of reimbursements for a non-taxable property, because I don't think you can grow a state if you don't have strong and vibrant cities. So in all those senses, I think they owe it. But in a legal sense, they don't. And it's important that we not get confused about that. This is a game of persuasion, to try to persuade the rest of the state that it is not only in Hartford's interest, but in the state's interest to have a city that is strong and thriving. But the whole, what you're talking about applies to any property tax system anywhere in the country. And if you're asking the courts to say, property taxes aren't constitutional, you'd be asking them to overturn, you know, 250 years of municipal funding in the United States of America. I just don't think it's, from a legal standpoint, I don't think it's likely to be a winner. This, the other piece is the debt. So here's, here's one way to think about it. Prior administration faced the same kind of structural problems we did. These aren't new. No, they faced the same problem, having a city that's built on the tax base of a suburb, with costs that are going up and revenues that are stable. And they were trying to figure out how to fix it. And what they did to fix it was push some of that debt forward, just a few years. So it bought time, it created some relief and some breathing room. At the same time, there were other things done, you know, parking garages were sold to get some one-time revenue, and other measures as well, to close those gaps in a one-time way. But that debt refinancing, which created that short-term relief, but the mountain that we now face, is one of the biggest challenges. But it's important to say that even without that, it's not as if the picture would have been rosy. The reason they did that was because the picture wasn't rosy. I happen to disagree with the way that they solved it. But it's not as if everything was good. It's that they were facing an unworkable problem, and they chose to respond to it in a way different than I would have chose to respond. But the fundamental root of it is the same, which is it's unworkable, because you have a city built on the tax base of a suburb.
Hello, my name is Mike, I live in the West End. And I'm wondering, in addition to a conversation with the state, has there been any progress in conversations with the county and our neighboring towns, who surely they can't deny the dependency that they have in Hartford? Like, has there been any progress with Blackson Berry's mayor, or any of that?
I think a lot of people, and I hope more people now than a couple of years ago, recognize how vital it is to the region and to the state to have a strong capital city. I think a lot of people agree with that in theory. I think a lot of people recognize more that you can't have a growing economy if you don't have a strong city. But if you're asking whether those towns are all ready to address that either by consolidating our towns, or by agreeing to a different revenue structure at the state level that's not advantageous to their towns directly, I don't think so. But, you know, look, I think you asked the right question. From my perspective, this is, the problem in Connecticut is that we're so parochial, and we're so narrow-minded, that we don't look beyond the borders of our town. And there are not many states in the country that operate that way. In most places, the metro area, the city is much larger than ours. And by the way, most other places in the country are growing faster than we are. And most of that growth is happening in the cities. And it's driving growth that doesn't just lift up the city, it's driving growth that lifts up the entire surrounding region. So I think that we, as a state, better come quick to the realization that our economic future depends on having stronger metro areas anchored in a strong urban core.
I'm just thinking, like, every other, every other urban core in Connecticut is struggling as well, and they all need money from the state as well. Would we have more luck, you know, pooling our resources in the greater Hartford area, and then New Haven can do that with themselves? But, idealistic, I know.
I, I've accused of it too.
Eddie, we'd like to know why West Hartford concerned their businesses around cracker, because every time I see an empty store, they turn around, they can get a new one. We can't do that. We are downtown, it's half-empty, but you know that anyway. And I know we tried one lien sale one day, because the signs are in it. We tried that one day, and I guess that's never worked out, and that's moving, because they have their reasons why. It just really bothers me.
Sure.
How come past wouldn't even solve it, future can't even solve it, because they're angry because, and homeowners, we know that the West End, they leave, they took their sale up and sailed, and they take, it's too much in taxes, the taxes will be too much later. It just really bothers me how, we won't even do Delian Stadium, and I say absolutely no. I tell you in my head, absolutely no. Let's all do it, because if it doesn't work out, we're stuck with another thing. So I read that.
Thanks, Eddie. So on that, that first question, which is, why, why is it that, you know, if you look at a town like West Hartford, it seems that they're able to fill their vacant storefronts faster than we are? There are probably a bunch of answers to that. In the, I would say a couple of things, though. In the downtown, in parts of the city, there's actually been quite a bit of business growth. You know, if you go down to Capitol Avenue in Frog Hollow, for example, you know, you'll see four new businesses that weren't there a couple, you know, a year ago. And that's partly because of a really important investment in the Hartford Office Supply Building. Capital Region Development Authority, CRDA, made an investment, public-private partnership, to bring that blighted monstrosity back, so it's now a beautiful residential building. And because of that, small business owners had the confidence to invest on the other side of the block. And now you've got a hip little bar, a burger place, a coffee shop, an ice cream shop coming alongside the barber shop that's already there. If you look at Pratt Street, there've been a number of businesses that are doing well, and we've been working hard to create that environment of activity, pedestrian activity, to help support those businesses. In Coldsville, you know, you had the Hooker Brewery just opened a tasting room there. On North Main, there are a couple of new businesses that just opened up on North Main. And, you know, I was on Albany the other day with, at an opening of a business that had just opened. But, but you're right that we still struggle more. And I think there are two, probably two big reasons for it. In the downtown area, where you see a lot of those vacant storefronts, unfortunately, a lot of those storefronts are owned by one landowner. And that landowner has, for whatever reason, decided that it's more advantageous to them to leave them all empty than it is to fill them. And it is maddening and frustrating. I don't know whether they're taking it as a tax write-off, or there's some other complicated structure that they have, but they do not work to fill those spaces. And so if you look at the north side of Pratt, or at those spaces inside the XL Center, those retail spaces, and you see them empty, that's got more to do with the decision from a large corporate property tax, property owner than anything else. And on our avenues and elsewhere, I think there are two basic issues. One, the property taxes are an issue, because that drives what rents can be. And two, we are a poor community. The median household income in Hartford is right around $30,000. In West Hartford, I think it's in the neighborhood of $120,000. And you have different spending power, different buying power. And retailers in particular will look at that. So those are two, I think those are the two, two of the drivers. But I also will come back to this point, that when you are able to make progress in a neighborhood, you're able to turn the corner, like that investment in the Hartford Office Supply Building, it can have a dramatic impact on the business environment and on the storefronts. And that's why I think the Albany Avenue Streetscape Project, that's finally going to get done after about 20 years of, you know, being on paper, will have an impact on Albany Avenue. So that's the best I can answer your question, Eddie.
Hi, I'm Bob Moffett. Going to be nice, I know the situation's really shitty, and you and your staff know it and say you're not trying. I want to thank you. This has been a long time coming. People can easily kind of blame whoever's holding the hot potato when the music stops, but I know this has been a long time coming. I think there are two paths we can think about, as far as increasing revenue, hopefully balancing the budget. There are about two things, I know a lot about drugs, I talked to you about last year, and I'm really confused why we haven't done it. We're worried about losing business to mass purchases, but they've legalized marijuana. I think Connecticut needs to get on top of that. It's not going to solve all the problems, but it can, it looks like it's happening in Colorado. I know there's a cultural kind of thing in Connecticut, maybe a tension between, like, the shore and the center, but the fact that we haven't done it is my log. If we got to do it, there's money there, you can invest into good programs. The second thing is about horrible drugs that for some reason Connecticut is a haven for, and again, I've talked to you about this before, the pharmaceutical drugs, especially the opioids. So I'm surprised that that's a horrible, Hartford and Connecticut especially devastated. Aside from the loss of humans, just the money and the resources that have to get deborded and dealing with that, I can't imagine how much we're kind of wasting on an issue. Again, a long time coming. So I want to know why, and this isn't just you, but my lawyer, and George Jepsen, the Attorney General, why they're not jumping on suing big pharmaceutical companies, like Purdue, located in Connecticut, in Stanford. Forty-one states, I think now, forty-one states are getting onto the lawsuits. I know in 2008, I think, we got some money from a broader lawsuit against them that Bloomberg pushed, but there's money to be made from the people down there in Stanford that have, they caused it, they helped cause this problem. They're making a ton of money, and we're regulating them now, but they're spreading across the world. So I think if we want to try to get some money, we can do it. And I'm wondering, why not? I hope there's not a conflict.
Thanks, bud. So on the first question, you know, that's a, that's a state policy question, whether or not to legalize marijuana. It's not something that we can do on the city alone. It was proposed in a couple of bills up the legislature, I don't think it made it out of committee. And so it's really a state policy issue that we can't, that we can't change unilaterally. On the second issue, we actually have been in active conversation with a number of other municipalities and a number of law firms that are looking at those lawsuits. You know, one of the, one of the issues is to try to figure out, you can quantify what the actual damages and cost is to a city in dollar terms, to see whether that's a lawsuit you're going to pursue. But those are conversations that we're actively having.
Good evening, Mayor Born. My name is Tom Cox, former long-term employee with the city. And I have two questions for you. One is, assuming the state comes through with 40 million, or whatever it is that you need to get through this fiscal year, I assume you're not going to declare bankruptcy at that point. But my, is that a correct assumption?
You finish it, and I'll...
And assuming that assumption is correct, my first question is, what is the strategy at this point in terms of trying to go forward with all stakeholders to try to come up with a sustainable solution?
So I'm going to answer the first part as part of the answer to the second one. So as you saw on those slides, 40 million dollars does not solve the problem. Even if it came every year for those five years, it doesn't solve the problem, because you still have those increasing debt costs, coming from the debt that was issued in the past, and you still have some of those other increased costs, like healthcare that Melissa mentioned. So when we talk about including involving all stakeholders, that means, number one, continuing to negotiate aggressively with our labor unions. And I will say, we achieved a very significant deal with our firefighters, we have not yet concluded deals with our other unions. Look, we're not in a position right now to give a whole lot. So I'm asking a lot from our labor unions, and I'm not in a position to say that here's what you get in return. That's a tough negotiation to have. I think we also have to be very careful about locking ourselves into long-term costs that, you know, some future mayor or council or generation of residents, they're going to look back and say, how could they do this to us? So those negotiations continue. I believe that if we're going to be getting money from the state, it's pretty clear out of what was in both of the budget proposals up there, that there's going to be some form of an accountability board. I think that accountability board is likely to create more pressure to get labor deals that help us achieve the savings that are necessary. I want to also say, our labor negotiations, we're not trying to squeeze every bit we can without having a mind to stay competitive in the labor market. We still have to be able to compensate people fairly, attract good talent, and run the city well. So you can't run a city well by pushing contracts so hard that you become fundamentally uncompetitive. But I believe there's a good amount of room in some cases between where we are and where that point would be. So we're going to push hard on those labor negotiations going forward. The bondholder discussion is another piece. So I think I mentioned in the beginning, we have been having conversations with our bond insurers. About 70% of our debt is insured by a couple of bond insurers, one big one. We are discussing with them possibilities for restructuring. And we had a call just this week, in which we spoke directly to bondholders, including some of the uninsured bondholders. Regardless of whether we get money from state, we're going to have to work with those bondholders to deal with that insurmountable debt burden. Otherwise, 40 million isn't going to be anywhere near sufficient to address the problem. So when we talk about dealing with working with all stakeholders, it's all those things. And that's why I hesitated to answer so clearly your first question, because having a sustainable solution, a really long-term solution, requires more than just getting 40 million dollars from the state. And by the way, 40 million dollars is not what we're asking. We're asking for a fair reimbursement of our non-taxable property. At a minimum, that means fully funding the pilot formula that exists, which is about $52 million additional revenue. But even that isn't sufficient on its own, and that's why we have to look at all of these components of a really sustainable solution. And we cannot... And we cannot take any option off the table until we've achieved a sustainable solution.
Fair to say, though, the state comes through with 40, $52 million, at least gives the city a little breathing room to try to do with these other issues?
It gives us, depends how much breathing room you think that is. I think you gotta work pretty quickly to address both labor and that debt burden. Because I think the other thing we have to be careful of is, I don't think we should be playing for breathing room. We should be playing for sustainability. In some ways, I think playing for breathing room is what prior administrations did. And I don't, I don't really fault them for it. It's kind of the normal thing to do. But at a certain point, when it's obvious what's coming down the road, I don't think playing for time should become the objective.
Right, well, I'm just suggesting, yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand. But yes, what it does is, I didn't put it differently. Rather than saying breathing room, I think what it does is, it establishes a framework in which you could build a successful path to long-term solvency, but you still have to put some other pieces together.
Correct. Just if I can, without taking up too much time, you've talked about the pilot and how much money is rightfully owed to this city based on all the non-taxable property. Have there been any discussions about, at the state level, about removing the tax exemption for nonprofits?
Yeah.
Putting the state aside, which is its own nonprofit, but everybody else, particularly to the extent that, for example, the hospitals, the university, Trinity primarily serve people from out of town. Have there been any discussions about just making them pay taxes?
Yeah, so in the governor's proposed budget this year, he actually made hospital, would have made, proposed to make, hospital property taxable. And that would have been roughly $50 million increase in our revenues, you know, about equivalent to the pilot payments. So that proposal was on the table. It was not in the Republican budget that was adopted and it wasn't in the, you know, the negotiated Democratic budget that was considered. So I don't think that that proposal is going to make it this time around, but it was something that the governor proposed and pushed for when he rolled out his budget earlier this year.
And as far as other nonprofits?
Other nonprofits, there's been some discussion, but I don't think there's been any, as far as I'm aware, there hasn't been any legislation that's moved, you know, past the committee stage.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could you talk about the Sustainability Board a little bit more? What do you have a vision of it like?
Sure. So the question was about the, it's called in the various drafts up there, Accountability Board. And it has a few, first of all, I don't know what's gonna get adopted. So I'm talking about things that have existed in draft form. I don't know what's gonna get adopted, right?
Yes.
But, but I think that what was, what was on the table had multiple tiers of accountability or oversight. And depending on your fiscal condition, depending on your outlook, you would automatically fall into one of those tiers. The fourth tier, the highest tier, was something that comes pretty close to the Waterbury Oversight Board that was put in place in the early 2000s when Waterbury was on the brink of being unable to pay its bills. That board was in place for about six years. And it had a number of authorities. One of them was that in the case of arbitration with labor unions, the board served as the arbitration panel. And rather than just having to choose between last best offers of the city and the union, it could actually say it's gonna be something other than what was proposed by anybody. So it was doing that, that part of a restructuring. It had the ability essentially on a tier four, again, to give an up or down vote on the city's budget. So we would pass a budget the normal course, but that board would say, we disapprove. Now, in practice, I think if that were in place, what would happen is we would have that discussion and that negotiation well before the budget process was ended. You'd do it together as much as you could. But there's no question that in that top tier, it is a level of oversight that comes pretty close to what was in the Waterbury Board back in the early 2000s. We would not have started in tier four. I think we would have started in tier three. And then there were a couple of mechanisms by which you could get moved up. One of them was if the mayor requested it and the council approved it. And the other is if the board voted to move a city up from tier three to tier four. But in that case, the mayor and the city council president would become members of that board when that vote was taken. But again, I'm describing something that didn't, that hasn't been voted on and who knows what it's gonna look like or, you know, get changed to or whether it will come to vote, if a budget ever comes to vote.
Mayor, thank you for the presentation and as well to the entire administration who's here tonight and who presented as well. Two questions. One of them has to do with the stadium. There are many, many residents in Hartford who want to know at the end of the day, and we understand that it's, all has been said and done at this point, and you have publicly stated that you were against it, but wanting to know the answer of how much, at the end of the day, did that actually cost the city residents in terms of bonding and future money that we end up owing? And then the second question in terms of long-term plans and sustainability for the city, we recognize that there are many residents who also work for the city of Hartford. And so when we talk about the sustainability and wanting a greater path for the city in the future, if we were to file for bankruptcy, how can we make sure that we, as a city, can also take care of the residents and their living wages who work for the city? If we don't have a base of Hartford residents who are employed, or, you know, suddenly we start firing a lot of Hartford residents who are employed by the city, then how can we be up with our sustainable future?
Thanks, Councilwoman. So I take those in reverse order. The first point, I just wanna, wanna deal with this, this is a really important issue. So you said, you know, in bankruptcies, how do you make sure that a bunch of people don't get fired? Bankruptcy does not mean that people will get fired. In fact, if we are not in a world where we have a new partnership from the state, it may be the only way that we can keep people from getting fired. We are at a pretty bare bones level of service right now. We have dramatically reduced staffing in every department. In our police department, we're about 100 officers below, you know, where an independent study said that we ought to be. We are actively hiring police officers. In our DBW, we're about 40 people short of where we were a few years ago. In all of our administrative functions, whether it's finance or budget or human resources, we are at truly bare bones level. Where, you know, when somebody is out sick or out on vacation, it makes it hard to operate. So I would challenge that first, you know, premise or that first assumption that bankruptcy means laying people off. In fact, I've been saying for a long time, I think we've cut about as much as is responsible to cut. That's why my budget submission last year didn't have more layoffs in it. And if we are in the world of filing for bankruptcy, it's the city that puts the plan forward. A judge doesn't get the keys to the city and gets to decide what to do. It's the city that puts a plan forward. And then the city engages in negotiations with all those same stakeholders we talked about, labor, bondholders, retirees, and has a negotiation about a fair and equitable resolution that allows the city to get on a path to sustainability. But given where we are, given where our staffing levels are, I don't think anybody should assume that there's gonna be reductions in staffing. I would be fighting hard to argue, and I think it would be a pretty easy case to make, that reducing staffing further from where it is today is not the way that you get the city on a path to strength and growth. And again, but here's what some cities have done in our situation. Some cities in our situation have viewed bankruptcy as a thing to be avoided at all costs. And as a result, they have continued to cut beyond bare bones. They have continued to lay people off. They have continued to change streetlights, you know, or fix streets. And that's why, you know, if you look at Detroit, you might say Detroit probably should have filed many years before it did, because what they did instead is they cut and they cut and they cut to the point that they had basically abandoned neighborhoods and stopped serving residents and delivering the basic services that residents deserve. That's what I think we should refuse to do. On the stadium question, in bonding, it's in the neighborhood of the stadium itself, about $70 million. But I will say this, as you said, you know, I didn't support the project when it was conceived. Obviously, we all inherited the project and had to play the hand the best we could. But this is important. Because we fired the contractor and because we got the insurer to come to the table and finish the project, there is somewhere in the neighborhood of $30 million more that we didn't pay as a city, the taxpayers didn't pay, but that the insurance company did. And I think that's about as best we could have played that hand, given just how bad it was.
Mayor, I'm from West Hartford and I'm a concerned citizen. I believe that as Hartford goes, so does the region. I firmly support you and your efforts to involve the region to support you and your staff and your efforts. You mentioned you shouldn't fault the folks in the past. I think you should. I think you should not be nice. Because I've been around, I'm not from Connecticut, I came here in 98, and I've seen it and I followed it. And some of our past leaders and administrations in Hartford have done you and this city a disservice. This is why we are where we are today, because nobody stepped up to make the decisions. They kicked the can down the road and now you're faced with a situation where you and your, and this beautiful city could go bankrupt. And I don't think that's a bad thing necessarily. If that's what it takes for people to raise their, you know, consciousness with regard to what used to happen in this city as far as just long-term sustainability, so be it. Because it's just a shame that it's gotten to this point, but don't be nice. I think you, you need to speak up and say, I'm dealing with this, you know, you're obviously not running for reelection.
I, I plan to.
Well, you, you, I hope you do, but you're not, you're not being nice as far as trying to do all the, all the nice things that past administrations have done to get reelected.
Well, let me, let me address some of this. I understand what you're saying, but, but here's where I think that you're missing a piece, which is, yeah, there are plenty of decisions in the past that I disagree with. There are plenty of decisions that were made that I don't think made our situation better and instead made the situation even more challenging for us today. But if none of those decisions have been made, we'd still have a fundamentally broken structure because you have a city that's built on the tax base of a subsidy. And my point before was that the mistakes that they made were not the cause of the problem, they were to some extent a symptom of the problem. They were trying to figure out how to keep the lights on and I think they dealt with it in a kind of traditional, normal way, which is to just buy time. And as a result, it's harder for us now. But that is not the root of the problem. The root of the problem is that you've got a capital city with twice as many people as your community, with a median household income that's about a quarter of what it is in your community, with nearly one out of every two kids growing up under the federal poverty line. And we ask that city to run itself on one basic revenue other than state money, and that's the local property tax. And then we take half that property and make it non-taxable. It doesn't work. So that's the root of the problem. And if we're gonna get in the business of faulting people who got us here, let's also include all those governors and all those legislators that didn't fund the pension program in the state. Because one of the reasons we've got $2.5 billion state problem up at the state is that the state of Connecticut didn't fund its pensions for 50 years. You know, let's felt, all of us, for not realizing at any point over the last 100 years, that carving up a state of 3.5 million people into 169 towns makes no sense. So I appreciate your point and I'm not, the reason I'm putting it back is that I think it's really important that nobody be under the impression that the root cause of the problem are mistakes that were made in the past. That doesn't mean there weren't mistakes made, but the root problem is far deeper.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. My name is Robin Standifer, and I don't necessarily have a question, I have a comment. You posed the question earlier about the, those individuals up at the state capitol have to ask themselves if they are willing to allow the capital of Connecticut to go bankrupt?
I don't think I said that.
Well, well, someone...
No, no, what I said is, what I said is, it's important, what I said is, they need to ask themselves whether they are committed and prepared to building the new kind of partnership that allows the city of Hartford to be strong and sustainable, not just for a year, but into the future. That's the fundamental question. That's the fundamental question, and that's what I posed before.
So let me address that. I will submit to you, and I will submit to everyone in this room, that through inaction and deliberate action, the state capitol, through various administrations and in this president administration, regardless of if it's Republican or Democrat, have shown themselves that they are not willing to do that. So having said that, I just wanted to address this slide right here.
I know this was up...
Well, from a realistic point of view, you as mayor have to deal with a realistic political landscape. That is another discussion all in of itself. Here's the situation. Let's be real. The state is not going to drop dramatically in state aid. You know that. I know that. That's not gonna happen. It could happen, but that's pie in the sky. You have to deal with real numbers, they have to deal with real, real numbers. That's not gonna happen. So the way I see this happening, for the city of Hartford, not to fall for bankruptcy, the only way that's not going to happen is you're going to have, you're going to have probably some of Path One and more of Path Two. And at the end of the day, the city of Hartford, to come out of this situation, is going to be more of a city doing what it needs to do, because you really can't depend on the state doing what it should do. And that's the bottom line. And that's all I got.
So just to be clear, Path Two is bankruptcy. Right? Path Two is bankruptcy. And I think the point you make is a really, really important one. And it's one that I tried to address earlier, which is that as we're looking at these paths, we shouldn't just be looking at what's gonna happen in this budget. We need to be looking down the road. We need to be looking at whether the state is going to continue that level of funding that's necessarily make Path One work. I'm not sure whether or not you're right, though, about the first one. I think that there may be legislators and others who recognize that you can't have a strong state if you don't have strong cities. And that believe that the reputational harm for the state of Connecticut will be so great that they're prepared to do that. But it's a question that I don't know the answer to and I don't know that anybody does. But, but your, your point is totally valid. If you believe that the state of Connecticut is not going to be, not just passing a, if you believe the state of Connecticut is not going to sustain for the years ahead, as far as the eye can see, a different level of financial support to the city of Hartford, then the city of Hartford should buy bankruptcy.
It's not gonna happen, Mr. Mayor, it's not gonna happen. Simple standard. That's just real talk, I think.
Councilman Doig?
Good evening and thank you, all who have been able to stay. I'm a little puzzled by what sounds to me like a logical contradiction or paradox in what you said, when you addressed that we need to, let's say, get more from the unions, from the workers here in the city, especially those who happen to live in the city. And those who have not gotten raises for many years in some cases. The paradox seems to me is when you said that we already have a very low median or mean income, and many of these workers happen to live in the city and depend on their wages, which they then recirculate. Then how by further reducing their wages or asking them to sacrifice, will they have discretionary money to circulate right here in Hartford? At the same time that it's known that even now the administration, including some members of the previous administration who are still in financial positions, are outsourcing some of that money, which sends it out of town, rather than keeps it in the town, circulating... rather than keeps it into town circulating in order to build the city, the city in a sense of sustainability. That some cities, when they happen to have a good, strong labor component, and I wish more were here, remain, they have stability, they have security, they spend their money locally. And doesn't this contribute at least as much to sustainability of a strong city economy by maintaining the skills, the spending within the city with decent conditions for employees who have satisfactorily performed over so many years? This is done elsewhere, so why, why harp on getting more of those concessions when it will give just this harmony and this economy?
Thanks, Counselman Deutsch. So as you know, you know, in some of the unions with which we're negotiating, actually a very small percentage of employees live in the city of Hartford.
I know.
A very small percentage. And post-retirement, often a very small percentage of employees live in the city. So when you're talking about things like pension benefits, we send an awful lot of money out of the city down to Florida and South Carolina and elsewhere, a whole lot of it. So I take your point, but I, but I also think it's important to, to, you know, acknowledge that in many cases, a large percentage and the vast majority of employees are outside the city. The other thing is, look, I think we have a basic responsibility to compensate fairly and competitively. But I want to give you an example. You know, the fire contract that I talked about. We made dramatic changes there. I mean, you couldn't, you can't find a labor contract that's done more than that agreement did. And I give the firefighters a lot of credit. It was four years, zero wage increases. And by the way, to your point, I don't think there is a union that has gone very long without wage increases, just to challenge that.
Past me and seventeen sixty have a deed. Those who take care of sanitation.
A couple, a couple of years, because that's a contract that's still in negotiation. But if, if you look at that fire contract, it was four years zeros, which was shifting from a existing healthcare plan to a high deductible healthcare plan, which increased pension contributions by fifty percent, which for a lot of active employees shifted from twenty-year to twenty-five-year retirement and did a lot of other things as well. That contract saved us a lot of money. And then we went on to hire. We put out a posting to hire some new firefighters. And by the way, you've got to be a Hartford resident to apply to the fire department. We got seven hundred applications. We got more than four hundred of those applicants through the exams, passed onto a certified list. My point is, we made dramatic changes in that contract and yet we had seven hundred people applying for those jobs because they're still very good jobs with reliable benefits, with reliable work. And so I think we have a basic obligation, both to our employees and to our taxpayers, to compensate fairly and competitively and also to compensate at a level that we can afford.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Gabriel. I've been in Hartford for about two years now. Life long Connecticut resident. I just have an observation. It's been on my mind really since moving up to the city. I did some reading on Wikipedia, so I guess wasn't wanting to say it probably because I'm based off of there. So I guess I just take that as a big value. And one thing I've noticed about the city is that it's had a pretty big population decrease, you know, from the fifties up to today. I think Hartford's lost somewhere around fifty thousand residents. So I think that compounds a lot of things we're talking about as far as property taxes, fact that, you know, now, you know, I guess with that came, you know, a lot of white blood where it was sort of a drain of maybe money and resources and everything else, business and everything else. But one thing that I did, you know, just to pick up on was the fact that when it comes to the jobs in Hartford, you know, Hartford's been known as the insurance capital of the world now. I'm not sure if it's still holding distinction with Hartford or Etna, but at any rate, read a piece somewhere, I was saying how eighty percent of the jobs that exist in Hartford are taken by eighty percent of residents that come from outside Hartford, something to that effect. Which sounds to me like with something like that, you know, the money that's generated here is pretty much leaving. It's going to the suburbs around Hartford. So I guess for most of the state itself, it's kind of like a telltale city. You have, you know, thriving suburbs all throughout the state, you know, very good school systems and the rest of it. But you have cities that are pretty much just struggling, suffering, and that's been the case for a long time. So I guess I'm just curious to know, I mean, what are, what is the big corporate culture in Hartford and other parts of the state doing to, to be rectified and balanced there? With, you know, eighty percent of the jobs that exist here are taken by eighty percent of out-of-towners. You know, what options, what viable economic opportunities do Hartford residents have if the actual good jobs here, you know, are being taken up by people who come from outside the town? Granted, I believe in a meritocracy, let the best qualified people with, you know, best qualifications get those jobs. But what mentorship programs or training and apprentice programs exist just for the generations coming up today? Most of the jobs are going to be high-tech jobs, STEM jobs. You look at who's taking over those jobs, it tends to be foreigners. You know, you look at PhD programs, foreigners. I was at Hartford Hospital recently and most of the doctors were Asian, they were Indian. I mean, what are we doing to, you know, kind of educate our own, what is kind of the state doing when it comes to just having a more talented and I guess a more educated workforce to, you know, meet and maybe start to be just a stronger tax base to maybe kind of fix our problems from within over time?
It's a, it's a great, it's a great question. You know, so you're right, the vast majority of, of jobs in the city of Hartford are held by people who live outside the city. And the vast majority of people who live in the city of Hartford work outside the city of Hartford. So there are a lot of, you know, folks who are having to commute to, to other jobs around the city, around the state. And, you know, one of the, one of the challenges, this is something we encounter all the time. There may be a company that's bringing, I'm going to get to your high skill question in a second, so I'm just going to kind of come around to it. But there may be a company that's coming, that is providing lower skilled jobs that we need, that our community needs. But we got no land. And so, you know, you've got that new distribution center or that new factory or that new, you know, you know, food processing facility. We can't cite them here because we don't have the land. Comes back to that problem of being small. And so instead, you have those facilities cited in communities outside that are less densely populated, that have less land. They get the tax revenue from those. We lose the tax revenue. And folks who live in Hartford, many times without great access to transportation like cars, have to figure out how to get to those jobs. And on the flip side, as you described, a lot of the higher skilled jobs in the city are held by, by folks outside. To me, this comes back partly to that same question we were talking about, about how fragmented we are. And, and I think that if we really looked at what's going to let this region grow, it would be by operating more as a region. And look, and if there's a company that's getting cited somewhere to raise, to, to make sure that that revenue is shared throughout the region. There are plenty of places that have done that. Minneapolis did it. There are joint economic development districts in Ohio that do that. There are plenty of places that do that. It would not be breaking any new ground. So that's one piece of it. And then the second piece is the skills issue. So obviously part of that's rooted in education, in basic K-12 education. But some of it's also the kind of stuff that you mentioned, like apprenticeship and, and workforce development. And we're trying to build those in partnership with our, with our companies. So, you know, the Travelers, the Hartford, they both have pretty sizable apprenticeship programs that they've launched that are focused in Hartford. That doesn't mean we don't have, we have to do a lot more. We have to do a lot more. But we're, we're trying to build those partnerships and trying to grow those partnerships. And the other thing, of course, is that, you know, if you look at the major taxpayers to the city, in a lot of cases, they are those big companies. So we shouldn't think that they're not contributing. They are contributing in a big way through their tax dollars. And while we may not capture as much of that, you know, disposable income of the folks who are working in those buildings if they live somewhere else as we, you know, what if they did, if they lived here? But they're spending some money in the city of Hartford too, which is important. So, you know, I think we have to look at those companies as assets. But we also have to figure out how to build partnerships and pipelines and pathways to get more of our residents into those companies. Now, last thing I will say, and this is also important, and I'm not saying anything anybody here doesn't know. A lot of times, when somebody gets one of those jobs or gets a job, even a job in the city, a lot of the time, once they get that stable, good, middle-class or better income, they move out of the city. And so, you know, that's why ultimately I think the solution is looking at ourselves as bigger than the city and having this broader sense of identity and common purpose. And, you know, that, you know, always to me comes back to the, one of the root problems, which is that we're just so fragmented as a place. That's a great question. Can I, I apologize. I asked this gentleman to wait and we talked about a lot of other budget stuff. So if you want to come up, I, I'm sorry and I appreciate your waiting while we're talking about budget stuff.
Hi, my name is Rodney. I have a blighted property that I've been trying to repair for a while. I worked with the city for a while until they just backed out from helping me. But this past year, I just found out, I rent in Hartford and I have a home that's not livable right now, but I've been trying to repair it. But they just raised my blighted property three times the amount by the appraisers. And I want to know how is that justified? It went from, it went from an amount of about twelve hundred to four thousand dollars. So based, I had to go to Superior Court for it and I paid a lawyer for it. And the assessor tripled the amount and he knew me too. He went to court and he knows the condition of the house and they let it get tripled. And I think that's wrong and I've been trying to contact you for a while regarding it, but how do you justify that?
I can't answer that question without more detail. But beyond photos, I have to look at comparable properties. I have to look at prices on comparable prices. To look at all the things that the assessor looks at when they do assessments.
The assessor saw the house and he went to court, my lawyer, and they tripled the rate. So how am I going to keep it up?
So what I can tell you is that's.
Renting a property when I can't make money off this house, should you be working with the residents to make it sustainable and able to fix the house?
So a couple of things. One, there is a blighted property assessment. So for example, if you went in right now, presumably your property is not worth as much as it would be as if it were fully developed and, and, you know, in the best shape possible.
It's worth fifty thousand, but they raised it up to a hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay, so the question though is what would the value be if it were not blighted, if it were fully developed? You know, I can't answer that question.
They read it at a hundred and sixty thousand. But when I went to court with the city of Hartford, it was dropped down fifty thousand.
Okay.
How do you justify that three times?
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't answer the question because I don't know enough about the situation to answer it.
What?
But you won the case.
Yes, I did. I'm going to have to go to court again though.
Why?
Because they reassessed the house at a hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay.
And I've already met with, because my lawyer, John Gale, met with his assessor.
John Gale's representative? He is on the city council.
So now I have to say, have you gone for a blighted property that is not worth a hundred and sixty thousand?
I understand. I apologize that I can't give you an answer, but I can't give you an answer because I just don't know enough to give you an answer.
It's thirty-four yard, you know, take a look at it. Take a drive by. There's no porch there. I can't even see mail.
I understand.
You do understand.
I understand what you're telling me, but I don't know enough to be able to give you an answer.
There's no porch. I can't even get my trash picking out. Paper service is like trash.
I understand that you're saying that, but what I can't know is if you, if you built a porch and if you beautified it and if you took care of all the blight, I can't know that it wouldn't suffer? Four hundred thousand dollars. I don't know anything about it.
It just reassessed a hundred and sixty thousand. What else is going in the best?
I apologize, sir. I apologize. I can't give you a better answer. I can't speak to a specific property assessment. Personally.
What? Not in this meeting? I want to show you the photos and show you what happened.
I, I can't get involved in the assessment of property. I, I just, that's not something that's appropriate for a mayor to get involved in. There's a process that's established, including an appeals process in the courts.
And you're the leader of a city. You should be, there should be check and balances.
I don't think, but there are should be check and balances, but I don't, the check and balance is what you use. It's the court. Right? I don't think you would want the mayor to have the authority to go in and make a change to a property assessment. Can you imagine the potential for misuse and corruption if, if mayors have?
I think there's a bunch of million assessors if they're allowing rates to be three times the amount.
Okay. I, I, I'm, I'm sorry you're going through that. I will.
You don't, you don't even have to look into this, assessors, how you're assessing it.
I will, I will ask the question of them. That I can do. So I'm sorry, if that's the question you're asking, yes, I'm happy to.
I ask you to look into my property as well.
I am happy to do that. And by the way, you said that you've been working with a blight team and, you know, the city pulled out and gave up. I don't know if that was recently, but we have a blight team that I think is a heck of a lot better than we had and their focus. So I encourage you to, to reach out to them.
That's what I get.
Except, yes, well, they should, if your property is blighted, they should be sending those notices. But, 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 but at the same time, at the same time, if you go and talk with them and you have a plan to deal with that, they'll work with you. But I'm happy to look into it. I'm happy to.
Something works, that's the problem. Maybe you should look after them, see if they're doing their job for them. You're letting the, the tax rates on blighted properties triple. How many, what other, how many other properties are you dealing with besides blight?
I don't know.
Well, you should check into it.
I will.
I asked for me to be ready to ask.
Laura Settemeyer is very good.
I called your office and nobody contacted you.
I, I, I don't know where you called, but if you.
Call me in office.
Laura Settemeyer, who's our blight director, is very, very good. She's come in since you were dealing with this problem, if it was a year ago. I encourage you to reach out to the blight office. They will work with you. They will use whatever tools they have. On the assessment issue, I will talk to our assessor and I'll ask about the property.
Well, I need to get my trash picking out now because I'm paying a house rate of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to get all the, all the facilities that the city offers for what I'm paying. Because they won't even take my garbage.
I'm not, I'm not sure about that.
They won't take my garbage because it's, it's an unoccupied house that's being charged, rated as a house that's someone's living in.
And if it's, well, I, I, I will ask about it. All right.
I'm a new Hartford resident. When I moved here, made a decision to live inside the city where my church is. And I apologize, I was late, if you addressed this earlier. One thing I'm concerned about is, is growth for the city. And you have to balance out investments to make this a better place for those of us who are making decisions to move into the city. Just a place to live where we can stay in the city. As you well know, when I moved here, most people said, they showed me houses every place but Hartford. And I just had, I just made a personal decision, I'm living here. So could you, if you're talking about, I apologize, tell me a little bit about like the plan to say we got to do some investments and to make this a better place to live for, for the residents that are here.
Thank you. It's a, it's a great question. And again, that's, so I don't know what point you came in, but one of the things I've said is that we, we cannot cut our way to strength and we cannot cut our way out of this fiscal crisis. That's why there's a, there is a limit to how much you can responsibly cut before you damage the city's ability to grow. And at the same time, at the very beginning, our CFO and our budget director presented the, the budget deficits just for what it takes to keep the lights on and operate. And then on top of that, what you need to make in capital, necessary capital investments. The reason we did that is because we can't not make those investments either. Those are just as important, making those capital investments, you know, and keeping your streets as, as well-paid as you can, keeping your sidewalks from falling apart, those basic maintenance issues, those are as important as maintaining your basic city services. The issue beyond that, I think, is one that you're asking about, which is not just how do you maintain, but how do you grow? Now, one of, one of the key engines of growth has been CRDA, Capital Region Development Authority. So I talked a little bit earlier about the Hartford Office of Supply Building and Capitol Avenue, where you've seen a tremendous amount of growth. That's because of an investment that Capital Region Development Authority made in the Hartford Office of Supply Building. We are working with them on, in, in development efforts, not just in the downtown, but outside of the downtown as well. They have neighborhood funds. We need the bond commission to vote on them and there can't be any bond commissions until there's a budget. So there's lots of things that have to happen. But in prior budgets, there was approximately forty million dollars that was allocated for neighborhood investments by CRDA. Now, some of those have already begun to be spoken for. So there's a development called Bracket Hill that's up in the northeast neighborhood. There's developments, the redevelopment of Westbrook Village and Bowles Park in the, you know, the north, in sort of the west slash northwest. And those are being funded in part through CRDA. We're also trying to put together development proposals on Albany and Woodland, for example. That big blighted property, that's something that we've been prioritizing, but I'll confess, it's hard to get private investors there. If we succeed, it will be because CRDA is a part of that package. So I think the short answer is what we're putting up here is the path to allow us to be sustainable, stable and maintained. But then beyond that, to get to growth, we depend on things like this Capital Region Development Authority's ability to continue to make investments and to some extent on commitments like the corporate commitment, which said, you know, we'll pay another ten million dollars per year for, for the next five years. And one of the things that those three companies said when they made that commitment, and I think they were right to do it, was we're not offering that to just fill a hole. We're offering that to help be part of a sustainable solution that gets to strength. And, and so I think we're going to have to, you know, use that. We're going to have to try to attract broader investment, including maybe some additional commitments from other corporate entities or some nonprofits. We have, I have those conversations with, with, with those organizations. We're going to have to. We're going to have to piece together every bit of growth investment that we can, but first and foremost, we got to get to stability and maintenance. I don't know if that, you know, I wish I had a better answer, but I think that's the best answer we've got. So I, I know we've gone, we've gone long and I think that Infinity, which has kindly led us through this venue, is, is letting go soon. So I'm going to take that to you, sir, and then Councilwoman Thames.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I really appreciate your boldness. You are a very bold man. I appreciate that.
Other people have other words for it, but I appreciate it.
I'm really, I can give you more symptoms, but this thing came about, it's a little outside the budget thing, but it came out very recently with the Amazon HQ2 thing. And I was excited, I was really elated, because most of the growth that we have had here, baseball stadium, football stadium, hockey, soccer, and thank God we have run out of sports. So no more stadiums, so good for that. We need a different type of growth. The book that I think you and I have been reading religiously, that is the Metropolitan and based on a lot of the things, it is about urbanization, it is about building, we are looking at new economy. One third of Connecticut's population lives in this M.A.S. How many people live there, one third of Connecticut? So we need the growth and economic planning and thinking and so on from within the city itself, no longer from Capitol Avenue. I mean, I can prove it also, if you look at the cities that have gone for the Amazon HQ2 bids, a lot of the cities did it, a lot, bulk of their work by themselves and not the state. This new rep, urbanization review, metropolitan rep, we are seeing, there has to be more independence in economic thinking, economic planning.
Yeah.
No more sports stadium, that has a different inter mobility and seasonal mobility and so on.
So let me, let me address that. So at the risk of sounding like a, you know, one wonder here, I, I don't, I, I think it comes back to that issue of fragmentation once again. So the Amazon, or, you know, the Amazon request proposals for where they can site their facility, they said they want to be in a metropolitan statistical area of about a million people. We're a city of 125,000 people, but if you look at our region, we are a million people. We only meet that criteria if we work together in a different way and if we present ourselves to the world in a different way, and we market ourselves in a different way. If you look at this region of a million people, I actually think they can compete with any one of the municipalities or the metro areas that's going after that opportunity. And by the way, we are going after that opportunity.
I know.
But, but I do think if you look at this region as a whole, when you look at, when you, when you draw that circle in a way that captures a million people, first of all, you don't have to go that far out to capture a million people. You know, you're within 45 minute drive or so, right? You're, you're still probably a lot smaller than Houston. And you look at the number of research institutions and the number of advanced degrees and the number of patents that are taken out, it is, it's pretty competitive. It's above a lot of places that we normally think of as outcompeting us right now. So that's, and it goes back to that point about needing to organize ourselves and think about ourselves in a different way. If we can do that and if we can build a vibrant city core that anchors that region, I think we can compete for those jobs because Amazon is looking for the same thing that every other company is looking for. It's not just Amazon with, you know, looking to cite its 50,000 jobs, it's looking for a strong region with a vibrant metropolitan core and a region of about a million people where they can draw on a broad diverse labor pool. It's every company. And so if we don't, that's why I think this Amazon thing is so important. It's not about whether we get it or not, it's about recognizing that the competition for them is the same as the competition for every other job market.
Also that we, we can be impaired because we're a great asset.
Right.
We have an infrastructure of data by.
I agree.
High-speed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. I just wanted to leave folks with some parting words and I really appreciate you bringing this together and staff, Alyssa, Darryl, and all of you who came out tonight. But with that said, I want to put a different perspective because I know a lot of the narrative has been doom and gloom in our fiscal state, but I think it overshadows a lot of the positive and a lot of the bright spots that are happening in the market, right? So we have a host of investments happening in downtown, in our neighborhoods. We have a primary care doctor for the first time in decades is opening up a facility in the north end of Hartford that now our residents have access to walk to a doctor in a primary facility. We have, you know, 20,000 square foot maker space, so when you talk about the next generation of innovation in our economy, that is, again, these are private dollars that are being invested right in Coltsville. In downtown, we have a new innovation co-working space where entrepreneurs can come and she's attracting global entrepreneurs. There are things happening all throughout our neighborhood. We are investing, reinvesting in our parks. We are, you know, putting up new playgrounds, flashbacks, all these things that we haven't lost sight of, right? The city does not stop moving because we're in this fiscal situation. This too shall pass, we will get through this. But in order for us to continue to grow and continue to get out of survival mode in this permanent state of fiscal crisis, we need to build a foundation where we can grow. And that's what this is about. And as someone who was born and raised in the city of Hartford and has deep roots here, I have children here, invested here, my kids are in the school system, we, I understand where we are and we have to think about our situation differently, we have to think about our solutions differently. And we're being very thoughtful and being very careful how we do that. And this is a process. We, we have, we are where we are, right? And, you know, Alyssa, to your point, this has been decades conversations about pilot, all of it, right? Decades, decades. I can remember when I was 11, okay? About these conversations and battling with the state about what we're owed and what we're due. So it's time for us to kind of take our own destiny and we can't depend on the state. So we are where we are, we have to use what we have to get us in the situation where we need to go and where we want to be. We need to be in the driver's seat to some extent because we're not going to be able to pick our own state. We haven't been able to for the past 30 years. It would be awesome if we can get to a new, a new partnership and a new relationship, but we may not get there. So what are we then left for? What are the tools that we have to drive our own destiny? And that's where we are and that's the thinking. And again, the resident is at the center of this conversation. We do not move away from that. What is in the best interest of Hartford taxpayers? Are we not overburdening them? What is the value that they're getting for their tax dollars? What should we not be doing? What should we, these are constant questions that we're asking ourselves as we go through the budget process and how we understand, how we define our future. And I just really want you all to understand where we are.